Call to order the meeting of the Town of Sebastopol. Board of Supervisors for Monday, October 27 at 7:00. And I'll ask that you all rise and join with me in the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under one individual.
Roll call to establish the quorum, please.
Chairman Zipper?
Here.
Supervisor Wolfle?
Here.
Supervisor Weidman?
Here.
Supervisor Stavnas?
Here.
And Supervisor Teis?
Here.
Everyone is present, we do have a quorum. The next order of business would be a meet and greet in the public. You've met most of us today, but we'll start again with Linda, and then we'll go out in the audience.
Linda Waite, Clerk Treasurer for the Town of Sebastopol.
Dick Weidman, Board Supervisor, 4108 South Country View Road.
Chuck Teis, Supervisor, Bay Shore Drive.
Leo Zipper, the Chairman, and I live on Bay Shore Drive.
Dan Wolfle, Town Supervisor, Bark Road.
John Stavnas, Town Supervisor, Whitefish Bay Road.
We'll start with you, go ahead.
Tim Kleb, 4849 Gladden Drive.
Very good.
My wife, or my wife and my daughter Christina and Lydia Clem.
Welcome.
Dean Hoeger, Town of Gardner, Grandford's Fish Creek.
Neil Cockle, Carlow Court in Sebastopol.
Armando Zalatan, Litton.
Okay.
Paul, Whitefish Bay Road.
Now, we gotta get the guy behind the camera. There he goes.
And Lanny Chapman, Gladden Drive.
The agenda has been properly noticed?
Mr. Caspin?
Need a mo.
That was public participation.
I'm sorry, bud.
Public participation?
Oh, okay. We had the meet and greet part of it. Okay, do we have anybody in the public wishes to speak tonight?
One short question if you would, Mr. Chairman.
No questions, you can speak though.
One short comment. I'm curious to know about the proper sequence of the agenda as Article Number Four, Public Participation, comes before the agenda is approved. In all the town meetings I've been to, usually it's call to order, quorum, then approval of the agenda. So, I mean, it's just a minor thing, but that was my.
Yeah, the reason for it being that we didn't want it to be part of our meeting, okay? And that allows you to speak on items that are not on the agenda, otherwise we have to, I would have to stay to the agenda. So, that's my purpose. Thank you. Anyone else with a comment?
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to thank 911 Lawn Services, Randy and Linda Schultz, for donating several truckloads of mulch used at our town park this fall.
You're here.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we thank them. Approval of the minutes, Board of Supervisors, meeting September 22. Would be next.
You can approve the agenda?
No, okay, let's go back and approve the agenda.
Move that we approve the agenda as principled.
I'd second that.
All right. No additions, corrections, or alterations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approval of the minutes, September 22, 2014. Questions, comments, corrections, additions?
I'd move to approve the Board of Minutes.
I'll second.
Get a couple of corrections.
Go ahead, but you'd better be careful.
Dean Hoeger's name was improperly spelled. It's H-O-E-G-G-E-R, correct? And three different locations in the minutes, so.
Does that mean you read them, or else Dean called you?
No, I read them. I wouldn't have noticed the spelling error, so I'm glad you did, Dean.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's skip down to.
New Business.
New Business, Row and Numeral, Number 11. The Hitching Post Cafe and Pub Incorporated, application for accommodation, class B alcohol beverages license at 4849 Gladden Drive. Tim and Christine are here for that purpose. Linda, it all goes through you, you wanna advise us what's up so far?
Yes, the application was received on September 30. We were missing a few things, so I did, by correspondence, on October 2nd, send a letter to the Hitching Post with the copy to the current license holder, which is McClellan Holdings LLC, care of Nancy McClellan. Like I said, we were missing a few items. As of this evening, Mr. Clem has provided everything that was missing, including the seller's permit number, federal ID number, the excise, the alcohol and tobacco tax number. He has paid a prorated fee based on a license from November 2014 through June 30 of 2015 that will put the Hitching Post on a regular cycle with all of our other establishments. The agent as appointed is Christina Clem. So, I believe all of the paperwork is in order. A notice was published in the Door County Advocate as required. A fire inspection was conducted earlier this fall, and I have an okay from Fire Chief Tim So, I have no, I'm not missing any information at this point.
Okay, do we have a surrender of the previous license?
We do need a surrender of the previous license. I did mention that to Christina and Tim earlier, so they are going, that's required to be posted on the premises, so they are, they will be surrendering the original, and I will be handing them their original license in the name of Hitching Post Cafe and Pub Inc. when that is turned into the office here.
I did speak with Jim McClellan this afternoon, informing him that we were attending a meeting tonight, and he said that any information or anything that was needed, they would be more than willing to remove that.
Okay.
From their name and participate in getting it into ours, so I'm sure it won't be a problem tomorrow afternoon, get that information to you guys and the original license.
So, you want that dropped off here?
Yes, please.
Okay, Tim, you wanna expand on your efforts here? What is your intent, and how often can we count on the Hitching Post to be again open?
We have set hours from 7:30 a.m. We do breakfast, lunch, and dinner every day, except Tuesday. Tuesday, we will be closed. We do everything from omelets to French toast, bacon sausage, pancakes, all the Door County coffees, teas, expressos, letting marys, mimosas next week. We, all of our sandwiches and burgers are 100% Angus hand-paved burgers. Chicken sandwiches are chicken fillets, and we brought back Laguardia's cheese curds. Everything on our appetizer menu from chicken wings to Spanish jar choked dip to black of tan onion rings. Quesadillas have been a huge hit, so we plan on bringing back the Hitching Post, how it was, was, was in the past, with set hours, and, you know, bring it back to the community, and.
Very good.
That's what we plan on doing for the area.
Kristin, you wanna add anything, or?
Uh, no, he's much better talking than I am.
Why do you need that big cooler now?
Yeah, exactly. We've been, again, not to, we've been doing, all of our fish is fresh fish, we're never frozen, it's dry ice and shipped to us, so.
Okay.
We've had a lot of compliments and everything, from our fresh perch to walleye, to beer-battered shrimp, to catfish with our homemade Cajun ranch sauce, so.
Very good.
You know, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, provided that the surrender of the license is made, motion would be in order to grant, provided all the conditions are met.
So, move.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dan, the second to John, that we approve the alcohol beverage license application for Randy N. How's that gonna work?
Actually, it's gonna be in the name of Hitching Post Cafe and Pub Inc.
Is it INC. or LLC, or which one?
INC.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll catch you later, I mean. Thanks for showing up tonight.
Thank you guys for having us, and we hope to do everyone happy and proud and bring it back.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, welcome to the Town of Sebastopol.
Thank you.
And don't forget to bring in the license.
Yeah, tomorrow morning, first thing, I'll give them a call.
Oh, I'm not normally here on Tuesday mornings.
Okay.
Well, only for a little while, so.
Well, I'm sure it'll take them.
Okay.
Yeah, a little bit.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, guys.
Okay, good luck. Bye.
Bye.
Bye, and thank you for coming.
Have a good night.
Financial report, September 2014. You know, the fund balances, the budget versus the actual through September 2014.
We've just been going through a lot of money.
Yeah, I can see that, yeah.
Got $165,000 transfers out, and no indication as to where.
Into the checking account. We had to do an interim transfer from our funds into the checking pending receipt of our transportation aids and some other monies. If you recall, last month, we were sort of in the hole. I shouldn't say in the hole.
Year.
Year.
To write the checks out.
Okay, any further questions, or wouldn't that show as a credit into the checking
It should show as a credit into the checking, and I'm thinking that that was not.
It's got transfers down on the bottom under the Bay Lake Money Market account for $30,000.
Yeah, no, that, that, I don't think that 165 is correct, actually. All right, I'll have to do some checking.
Okay, any further comments, questions?
I'm thinking that might be a cureill for from last month, I forgot to take it out.
Any further questions, comment?
None from mine.
We have a motion and a second? Yep.
No, we don't have a motion. Do you wanna just pend it over to next month and pending clarification?
How can we prove something that isn't right?
Yeah, something's definitely not right.
That's what I would recommend.
If you look at the transaction report on page 3, you do see funds transferred from money market to cover bills. And then the other transfer is on 9/23, $15,000. So, that is the 165,000 right there. That just didn't get entered under the credits part. But I can certainly correct it and bring it back next month.
Okay, we'll lay it over until next month, make sure the correction is made. Oral Committee reports, do we have any? Chuck?
No. We're coming up later with the ordinance discussion, unless you want additional.
Well, we can speed right, right to it, let's get the other stuff out of the way here. Were there any questions on the committee report, Sturgeon Bay or Sebastopol Park and Rec, two meetings? And then there was also a property manage, management committee and tourism executive committee meet. We'll accept them and place them on file. License and permits would be next, Independent Inspections Limited would be the first page. What was the inscription on the bottom, Linda? Bert, Kevin?
Oh, Kevin from Independent Inspections called me and said that there was some bookkeeping mix-up on their end, so this is not, these are not all of the permits that were actually issued for September. He will pick them up in our October report.
He has $165,000. Kevin, that's where you're building homes with it?
Thanks. All right, are there any questions on the remainder of the information? Independent inspections first, and then the town file reports on the rest of the building in our community?
It's nice to see some new building picking up in the town.
Yep.
Yeah, permits are really picking up in all of Door County because Independent just hired another part-time person.
Okay, pending business. Status, discussion, action, implements of husbandry. A couple of quick items on that. There's a presentation November 4 and 5 in Kiwanee County at their fairgrounds at Luxembourg to be done those days and the, I believe the Times were published in the newspaper. And also, I'm aware that the Door County Highway Department Commissioner was going to have an explanation of the implement of husbandry requirements and/or obligations to the town and what we need to do in conjunction with the Highway Commissioner. So, when we get down to the nitty-grits, we do have to have this accomplished by January 15. And I'll advise you, if we do have anything more concrete on the Door County situation, I think it's temporarily set for November.
So, question?
No, I've got November 17. It'll probably be a day meeting unless we can't get enough of the town people to come, and then we'll have to shoot for an evening session.
Question is, do we, is there a procedure in place that if we get a complaint by somebody in the town that they feel, you know, these ordinances are being violated?
Yep.
We do?
Who's gonna enforce them? You on here.
That wasn't the answer I was looking for. I mean, if somebody makes a call and says, you know, whatever, is not in compliance.
Well, initially, on some of the meetings we went to, you were along to Green Bay.
They went to a couple, but they didn't say anything about.
We talked about going down to Letter E, and since that time, they're proposing that Letter F be the one that we go along with, and that way, the enforcement of it would be done by the highway.
By county highway?
Well, they would bring it forward to the sheriff, I wouldn't get on that.
So, we just simply, so this thing with John Klose is in reference to Linda's comment and Al Burnstein, that they wanna try and get everybody on the same page across the county?
That was the initial intent, and I don't have the actual date yet, but.
Okay.
We all have the same problem.
Sounds good.
Okay, more information as we, as we get. Unless you have a question or two that, like Dick did, and we can bring it forward to John, but. Okay, let's go on then to New Business. The 2015 budget proposal. We did have a work session on the 21st, 22nd. Unfortunately, we didn't have anyone else from the community involved nor in attendance, so we did bring forward our version of what we thought our needs were, and it's up for discussion tonight. However, I don't think we're going to make any real changes to it because we do have to have a budget hearing, and that's scheduled for November.
17th.
November 17. So, if you did not view the budget proposal, did we have some on the desk before?
The entire proposed budget is available on our website. Just click on the budget link, and you can see it there. If anybody would like a hard copy printed, I'd be more than happy to provide one.
Do we have anything as far as the proposal is concerned now, and what, do we settle on a total?
On page.
Levy?
Levy on page 6.
On page 6.
Page 6, we have, she has the levy and then the increase from prior years, actually a decrease from prior years, but 1.855% increase in the levy, 2 cents.
Okay, for those who care, the levy per $1,000 2013 was .8874, and proposed for 2015 would be .9034, or 39, so it would go up 2 cents. And it is available if you need a paper copy, I'm sure Linda will run along for you. Nothing else, November 17 is the, is the date for further discussion and approval, and that has to be done at a town meeting. Questions, comments?
It'll, it will also be noticed in the Door County Advocate.
Okay, resolution ordinances, ordinance number 2014-01.
Leo?
Good morning.
This, was this just information for the Door Devils?
Yeah.
Because it's already passed.
Yeah, that's all it was, FYI.
The clerk has authority to grant technical license.
Well, they were.
She has a lot of authority.
They were a step ahead, they invited her, so. When is that date, or what?
It was Saturday night, but unfortunately, they could not have their bonfire after being inspected by the fire department.
Oh, okay. Well, that'll make them happy.
Burn a motorcycle.
Well, let's go on to the ordinance. The ordinance has been proposed and should have been at your desk, was at my desk tonight, or else you received it via the mail. And the, my information is that it was drawn up by our town attorney, and Chuck has been instrumental in bringing this about, so I'll go to Chuck and have you give a short synopsis.
Through the property management committee, we had Attorney Nesbit attend our meeting. One of the items up was the ordinance on irrigating of the liquid manure. And at that point, we went over several documents that were at our disposal. I receive more information again tonight on the subject. We discussed whether we wanted a moratorium, or we wanna go right ahead and write an ordinance. We chose to do the ordinance, and it will hopefully, until something better comes along, you know, if the state or the county gets involved, hopefully this will protect us at the time, at this time, anyway. The question keeps coming up, why do we need this? There is no problem here. The fact is, we don't want the problem here, so we're trying to head it off from the start. We're not going to prohibit farmers from spreading manure in the manner they're doing it today. We're not preventing them from importing manure from other counties or towns. All we wanna do is stop the so-called center pivot irrigation and the traveling gun irrigating of the liquid animal manure and agricultural wastewater. This ordinance is supposedly identical with the Town of Sturgeon Bay. Randy drew both of those ordinances, told me it was the same, so.
So, we paid him twice for the same per copy?
We all had the same thought.
Hopefully, we'll pay him half, but.
Okay, do we have any questions on the board?
Yeah, that center spraying, does that include those, I know Gilbert's Farms has those great big manure haulers with the big gun on the back?
Manure tankers, trailers, spreaders are not included. This is strictly the irrigation systems. You see them mainly in the southern part, western part of the state where you have a well in the middle of the field, and the irrigation arm goes around it.
But I think those could spread just as much into the air as anything else.
The other option is a traveling gun, where the well might be on the side of the field, and this traveling gun drags a large hose along behind it, or winds itself up on the hose, actually, I guess they pull it out and then let it rewind back to the well.
They can bring their own.
Gilbert's device is just a.
It's a gun. It sprays it out of the back of a tank.
Yeah, but it sprays it out about. It doesn't spray it near as high and as wide as the irrigating system.
Shouldn't spray.
So.
Sprinkler system.
I've seen there's a center pivot, yeah, yeah.
I mean, the wording in, in Item 3 pretty much is, you know, pretty detailed, and it says nothing about the portable tanks or anything like that. I mean, they have a spread probably about 40 feet out the back of that, but that's just the way they disperse it out of the tank, so. You know, and I actually took, I actually went over there and took this to them, and they, they didn't have any problem with it, so. The one, one question I do have is in Item 4, where we say any other agricultural waste. I know we, and I don't know, I guess this would be under it, we probably don't, we don't have any vegetable processing or. We probably don't, we don't have any vegetable processing or, or, I mean, fruit processing facilities in, in Sebastopol. But I think, you know, the rinse, the rinse aid from a vegetable processing or a fruit processing facility could be considered an agricultural waste. So I think to maybe protect us, we may, I mean, to protect somebody who may want to come in with a, a fruit processing facility, that it probably should, you know, be more explicit than say animal waste than just, you know, the broad term agricultural waste. Because I think, uh, I'm not positive, but I think Seaquest and Egg Harbor had to go through quite a elaborate, the, I don't call it procedure, because they irrigate out from their cherry processing plant. The water comes out of the plant, goes out into the field via a sprinkler system. So we may want to specify strictly animal waste and not just agricultural waste.
The problem with pulling it apart is that the agricultural waste is mixed in with the animal waste. And there are other items by, by all the studies that show and the regulations by the state to allow the different items into the holding tanks on the farm.
Everything goes in there.
So everything goes in.
Right.
And in order to protect yourself, this was what the attorney decided would, would do the best.
Well, I mean, we could cross every, I mean, if we had an application for a processing plant, we probably could.
You could always make an exception or have a permit process.
All right, any other questions? John?
No, I'm good.
Dan?
Nope, I'm good.
You're satisfied?
I do have some copies of that draft ordinance, if anybody's interested.
You want to offer that with your signature? You want me to do whatever? We need a roll call. Okay, do we have a motion then to? It would be ordinance number 20014-01. Is that the way it's going to be or is it backwards on the page?
Ordinance is, this is backwards. It should be ordinance number 2014-dash.
Zero one.
No, I'm sorry. Yes, this is correct. Resolutions are the opposite. Sorry. This should be fine.
This one will be zero one dash 2014. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we accept the ordinance prohibiting liquid, the application of liquid animal manure and agricultural waste using spray irrigation systems. Ordinance number zero one, 2014.
Do you have a second?
Second.
No further discussion ordinance. We will require a roll call vote.
Supervisor Stavounis?
Aye.
Supervisor Weidman? Supervisor Tice?
Aye.
Chairman Zipper?
Aye.
And Supervisor Wolfall?
Aye.
Passes five to zero and we have an effective date on this. Is this one of those we need to publish first?
If there's...
Or can we make reference to it?
If there are citations involved, which it appears there are, four features involved, we do need to publish, but we can publish a redacted version summary. So we would not need to publish the whole thing, although this ordinance really is not that long. It's just two pages, so.
Well, the last paragraph says that it's after following passage and publication, that's what I asked.
Um, I could get it into Saturday's paper.
Okay. Has Sturgeon Bay already published theirs?
I haven't seen it in the paper.
No. I think they're coming up in November.
Can you publish two things at the same time with two towns?
We'll be publishing our budget in Saturday's paper as well.
Okay. All right, make sure it gets...
Aye.
Published so that we're not in violation of it. The next one will be resolution three, two dash one four. Now we got that one backwards, Linda.
One of them is backwards and I'll have to check and see which one it is.
I think, yeah, all right.
I think it may be mine.
Okay. The resolution authorizing appointment of special registration deputies. And we'll let Linda explain that, please.
Well, new registrations in Sebastopol is booming. I've had many new registers the last couple of weeks. And if that's going to be the pattern for election day, clerks do have the option of appointing special registration deputies or having a separate poll person just conduct registration. So this resolution would allow me to appoint a special registration deputy to assist on election day or any other days here at the town hall or elsewheres if needed. And it would be only to conduct election, elector registration, just that one task.
And you don't require an ID?
Yeah.
Photo ID is not required for November fourth election, correct?
I see deputies with an S. Does that mean you need more than one?
Um, I did put it with an S just in case. Or maybe I may appoint one person. That person may not be available on a certain day, in which case I would have to appoint more than one, so that's why it's plural.
Okay, do we have a motion then to affect that? Pass that resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Vouchers, approval of vouchers, bills and claims, nine twenty-three to ten twenty-seven. Need a motion then first and then a question?
Does that we approve vouchers, bills and claims for nine twenty-three through ten twenty-seven, 2014?
Second.
Motion made in the second to approve the vouchers, bills and claims. Were there any questions when you went through? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the correspondence, rather go through them individually. We'll address that only if there was a question. Was a thank you from Humane Society for 1,500 that had been previously part of the budget. Our estimated population increased once to 2,662. And then for your information, Door County, 215 proposed CIP program showing the the roads to be accomplished in our town. Take up the next couple of pages. And the tax levy certified by the school district, uh, their school clerk, Lisa Veery.
So we're, we're going up from, well, we're going up to $300,000 roughly? No, a little less. What's in there? I see. Okay, never mind.
Well, we have someone from that honorable body who's a member of this committee.
What's the mill rate?
Mill rate, five...
Five dollars and forty-two cents.
Forty-two or forty-three? Forty-two? Five forty-two? Second lowest.
Five forty-three and where was it last year?
I do not have that with me.
I think it was five oh one.
Yeah, it could've been. It includes the referendum that was, that was passed. To exceed the law.
Okay, and the other information was from Round County Citizens for Responsible Wind Energy. And then we have the Great Lakes Chronicle, which is on file. But it has a article or two of interest. And as well, the last page indicates, uh, the Northeast Wisconsin Transportation Projects in Zone Four, which is our area for APC. If you need anything further, the complete manual is, uh, in the office with Linda. Yeah, and at your desk tonight, you should have had. Linda, why don't you give us a quick explanation of it?
On the, end of Northeastern Wisconsin Technical College.
Right, Wisconsin Technical.
I was shocked when I received an email from NWT-C to, saying that the levy was going to be reduced. And obviously, we did receive our levy notice. 565,000 compared with 1.1 million last year. And that the, the huge reduction is due to property tax relief aid to technical college districts.
Really?
Mm-hmm. So, um, Act 145 eliminated the current limit on a district's tax levy and impose, instead imposed a revenue limit, so.
Interesting. Huge savings, maybe, almost maybe enough to offset the school.
Do you know what the mill rate would be on that 565?
Yeah, it was, it was given, uh...
The mill rate, the mill rate last year for NWT-C was, I believe...
It's going to be less than, than, uh, less than ours.
Yeah, last, last year it was $1.66, so it's going to be cut in half.
Eighty-seven cents. It will have to be seen what next year will result in, um, especially with the structural deficit that's being projected in the state.
And the announcements are the public test for all fall elections will be held Wednesday, October 29th at nine o'clock. We have a turkey truck November 1st at nine thirty. And it starts at the town park. A little bit differently this year, but all your turkeys can show. General election is Tuesday, November 4th, 7:00 AM to 7:00, 8:00 PM in Sebastopol Historical, Historical Society. Salute to the veterans will take place Sunday, November 29th at one o'clock.
November 9th.
What, what did I say? Okay, November 9th. You make glasses, John. Door County Coastal Byway Council, Wednesday, November 12th. Budget hearing, special meeting date, special town board meeting is at six o'clock on November 17th. I asked Linda to give us an explanation on the early voting versus the absentee voting, which has kept her pretty busy. So let, listen up as she explains the difference while we have in Wisconsin and what we're doing here in our town.
Yes, I have been very busy with absentee ballots. Right now, we have, Sebastopol has about 2,000 registered voters on our list. Like I indicated, we have had a bunch of new registers the past couple of weeks. I think I'm up to about 260 absentee voters, so. Right now, there is in-person absentee voting and that continues. You can come into the clerk's office during regular business hours and vote absentee up until Friday, October 31st at 5:00 PM. In Wisconsin, we call it absentee voting. So you come into the office, you vote your ballot, it's placed into an envelope, signed and sealed and kept in safekeeping, processed on election day by our election inspectors. They open the envelopes and discreetly feed your ballot into the machine. So that's called absentee voting. Another word would be proxy voting. In some states, they allow early voting. You would again come into the clerk's office, fill out the necessary paperwork. You would vote your ballot and you would feed it right into the machine and then those ballots are kept there until election day. So that is the difference between early voting and absentee voting.
Ten percent.
Very good.
I have a question.
How many votes are you limited to?
What is public, it says public test for fall election.
Right.
Is that testing the poll workers?
No, we test our machines before the, the Wednesday. I'm glad you asked, John. I'm so glad you asked because I don't think a lot of people realize that we do test to make sure that our, our machines are programmed properly. We actually feed ballots into our, we, I set up the machines just as if a voter was here. We have a whole test packet, a whole gamut of tests that we go through, like we deliberately overvote or we deliberately, deliberately undervote. It's a test for that electronic machine to make sure that it does count your votes properly. So after we do our public test, and I have our chief inspector comes in and helps me so that she's familiar with the process as well.
Okay, but your testing takes place with the county clerk?
No, it takes right, it takes place right here at the town hall.
All internal?
So each of the municipalities in Door County, each of those clerks are conducting public tests. Anywhere between 4:00 PM on Tuesday through 5:00 PM on Wednesday.
Very good.
And then we call it into the county clerk's office. She records it and, like I said, to make sure that your ballots are being counted properly.
I had no clue what you were testing.
John wanted to go on many times, but he's a good caller.
College SAT exam.
Alias, it also known as, AKA.
Items for our next agenda. Be happening. Otherwise, if you do have some, contact Linda or me and we'll make sure it gets there. No other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Will they have a motion and I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wants to stay longer by themselves?
Only for freshmen, sir, provided.
Okay, we are adjourned.